To the September 23 Village Board Meeting, would you please join us and stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Okay, roll call, please.
This evening, we're starting with trustee Shaughnessy.
Here.
Snagowski.
Here.
Stapleton.
Here.
Kitridge. Anderson. Maher.
Here.
McClafferty.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, before we get into our special Mayor's Report, which has a swearing in of our new officer, we're gonna go through our consent agenda, so hang in there with us for a couple minutes. First off, the consent agenda consists of the following: Approval of minutes from the September 9 Village Board Meeting. We have approval of disbursements from September 9 through September 25. Need a motion, please?
Go move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee McClafferty. Roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kitridge absent. Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. All right, like I said, very special night. We have the swearing in of a new officer, Angelo Bombenek. Angelo, I'm gonna walk down there and we'll make it official, okay? All right. Chief, you wanna join us as well?
Let me just introduce our newest officer real quick.
Hey, Chief, real quick, do you wanna grab the microphone so we have you on?
Oh, okay. Dave? Do you wanna maybe, maybe go to the, stay at the podium if you?
Check, check.
Either way, actually.
So I wanna introduce you to our newest officer Angelo Bombenek, and welcome the Bombenek clan here. I think this is a record audience that we've ever had to swear a new officer in. But Angelo is a product of Downers Grove, grew up there, attended Downers Grove High School. He's currently getting his associates at the College of DuPage, and he's on his FTO program here. He's joined by his father Brian and his mother Melissa, and you know, it's a, you're getting too old in this business when you're way older than the parents of the officers. So, we're gonna have Angelo come over and the mayor will swear in, and then we'll have his parents come up and take some pictures as well.
And Angelo, I want a second with the chief, so there's nothing worse when you walk into the board meeting and you see it filled for no reason, but this just goes to credit how important you are and how important of an event this is. So Angelo, can you please raise?
Your family kinda?
Yeah, why don't you come over here? Can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, state your name.
Aye, Angelo Bombenek.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer according to the best of my ability.
And I will also support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will support the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
All right, thank you Angelo, congratulations. Yeah, and Angelo, just wanna let you know how important of a day this is. You have your coworkers next to you, they do a great job, and we've been hearing good things, and we can't wait to see what you could do for our village. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could? So hold on before you leave. Hey. Before you leave, so I've been around the village for a number of years. This is the first time they've used a real camera and taken pictures, so congratulations, special occasion.
Thanks again, thanks for coming out, everyone. Appreciate it.
Hi, guys.
Goodnight.
Night.
I do remember that a number of times.
Glad you came.
Sir, are we doing this now? Okay, okay.
Okay, next up, we have our presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending April 30, 2024. Darshana, do you wanna take it over, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to present the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended April 30, 2024. Our audit firm is Baker Tilly, and they began their preliminary fieldwork back in February, March timeframe. They were on site for a few days in June, and we wrapped up our audit and their final fieldwork in July and August. I just, their audit scope was a review of the key transaction cycles, internal controls, and preparation of the financial statement. I wanted to thank village staff and the audit team for their diligence and hard work this year. It was a collaborative working relationship, and we were able to complete the audit on time and on schedule. Included in the agenda packet this year is the single audit report. It's kinda new for this year. It's a statutory requirement when the village spends more than 750,000 federal funds, we have to file and do this single audit report, and we did spend, we spent ARPA funds. Joe Lightcap is the managing director on our audit engagement, and he's here today to present the audit report and also answer any questions you all may have, so, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Darshana. Thank you for having me tonight. I do have three reports that I'll be going over at a very high level, so if you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. I also like to reiterate Darshana's comments about the relationship, the collaborative relationship. It works well. The village is always prepared for us when we arrive. All of our questions are answered, and we get all the information that we look for in a very timely and thorough manner. It's a great, it's a great experience for our audit teams, and it goes very well, very streamlined, very timely, as you know, you can see by getting your audit presented to you in final form in September. A little bit about the annual comprehensive financial report. The village has once again issued this comprehensive report, which, as the name suggests, is a more comprehensive set of financial statements for your review, and will be reviewed by the Government Finance Officers Association for consideration in being awarded the certificate of achievement in financial reporting. So the report has won this award in the past. We believe it will continue to receive the award. This is a, you know, as the name suggests, a more comprehensive document. It has a transmittal letter in the beginning that gives a little bit of information about the village and your policies and internal controls, and then in the back, there's statistical information that provides good transparency and 10-year trend information, so you can see how the village's operations have done over time. On page one is our independent auditor's report. We have once again issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the village's financial statements. It's the highest level of assurance you can get from your outside auditors, and states that the information within is reasonable in all material respects, and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user of the financial statements. There were no new accounting policies adopted during the year, so the financial statements, if you decided next to last year's, it would look very similar in form and function. The numbers obviously changed due to the circumstances during the year, but there were no new changes to the look of the report. I always like to point out on page four, the management's discussion and analysis. This document, written by management, gives you a good overview of the financial results for the village in comparison with the prior year, and it's written from management's perspective, so it's a much easier to read and kinda more interesting document than the rest of the report. The rest of the report is a lot of good details, a lot of good information, helps people make decisions on the financial situation of the village, but the MDA really gives you a good idea of what happened and why during the year. With that, kind of my last kind of comments on the financial statements, there's good information on the full accrual level, on the statement of net position, which has the, all the assets and liabilities of the village, and then you have net position increased by about $6.4 million for governmental activities, and about $8.9 million for business-type activities. Governmental activities was mostly from operations, and business-type activities had some good capital contributions during the year, about $6 million that helped increase the assets and the operations of the water fund. Following that is some fund financial statement information, which is more short-term perspective on the village's results, and you can kinda see how each of your funds did on the short-term perspective. Following those fund financial statements is the notes to the financial statements, a good set of documents that gives you information on the increases and the decreases in the various accounts, capital assets, long-term debt. You can see how much capital assets were increased during the year, and how much your long-term debt was paid off as expected. The last thing I wanted to point out is that the police pension fund, the net position increased by about $2.5 million due to additional contribution and improved investment returns, which about 9.5% return on the police pension investments, so it's good to see. And then the police pension is still about 80% funded, which is a great achievement for the village to have such a high police pension-funded plan. With that, I'll take a quick break before I go on to my next report to see if the board has any questions on the financial results for the year.
A question. Is this the time of year when Moody's would be reconsidering our bond rating?
They usually do a biannual review, but unless we're going for a bond issuance, they wouldn't, they likely wouldn't upgrade it.
Wouldn't upgrade it or?
Yeah, they just do a biannual review, and we don't have any issuances on the radar. Good question.
The next report I'm gonna go over is the reporting and insights from the 2024 audit. This is our results, our non-financial results from our audit. It satisfies a few different auditing standards, information that we're required to communicate to the village, to the board on an annual basis. On the second page, it has my email and phone number, in case there's any questions. We work with Darshana and management to perform the audit, but we ultimately work for the board, and we'd love to hear any questions you might have throughout the year, not just when I'm here to present the audit, but anytime, anytime you should have any questions regarding the audit, happy to answer your call. The letter addresses our responsibilities, management's responsibilities, that there were no significant changes to the audit plan. It discusses our areas of focus, our thoughts on any significant risks of material misstatement, which are none noted outside of the standard areas, and just kind of our key areas of emphasis during the audit. It's very much a boilerplate letter. As you read through it, there's a lot of, a lot of noes, noes, and we did not have anything to report. So, very much a good letter for the results of our audit. I do like to point out internal control-related matters. We do look at the village's financial internal controls, not to provide an opinion on internal controls, but should we have anything that we feel the board should know about, we would put that in this letter. I'm happy to report, once again, we have no internal control comments to report to the board. And finally, there were no significant unusual transactions, no difficulties performing the audit, no disagreements, so very much, again, a good part of that letter. The last couple of pages are two-way communications regarding your audit, just a couple of pages for you to the board to read, and if there's any questions, if this part of the letter piques your interest in any kind of questions you might have for us, happy to, again, take that call. Finally, with the single audit, as Darshana mentioned, it was due to the ARPA funds. We tested the compliance with the federal regulations and the internal controls over compliance, and we have no findings related to that test as well. With that, I will open up for any final questions.
I just got a quick question. So, is the bound version, is that available yet? Okay, awesome. Oh, I'd love to get one of those copies.
Joe, I do have, yeah, I have one question. Just wondering, you know, with the change of interest rates and now again, the future potential changes, were there any things there that, on our reserve side, that you had recommendations for, or anything you guys have checked out or looked at doing differently? In other words, you know, are we sitting on too many reserves? Should we buy some things down? Should we hang? Are we in a good position? Anything on the reserve side?
Yeah, that's a challenging question from the audit perspective, because we're really looking at the transactions during the year. We don't look as much at management plans going forward to say, you know, because a lot of times, reserves could be used for capital projects or for future things that we're not looking at for the audit.
About our policies, do you look at that at all in the audit or not?
Various policies that impact the financial statements, the investment policies, capital asset policies, there are more accounting policies than kinda long-term.
Management.
Yeah, the fund balance policies, we look to see if they meet the minimums, and then that's just reported in the notes. It's not really, because it's not a legal thing, it's more of a, more of just a policy and how that, how you guys comply with that. We didn't see any violations of any policies in our work.
Joe, my annual question, obviously, you're there to, you know, look at and solidify and make sure we're doing everything, the numbers, you know, are substantiated, but is just, you know, from a, I guess, a higher level, is there anything you see us doing differently from other towns, or either it be on the good side, the bad side, the conservative side, the risk side, anything in general? Either be a policy or, you know, controls?
Well, I mean, you do have, you have, as many villages your size, you have a small finance department, and that's challenging for segregation of duties. The village does a good job of monitoring and doing overarching controls to make sure that the financial information is reasonable and not, you know, there's a good set of eyes on the financial information on a kinda, on a periodic basis. So that is done well. I guess what I would say that is done as best as, you know, we see is just the preparedness for us coming out. We're not always greeted with all of the information that we, you know, would like to see or need to see, but Darshana does a great job of being ready, really in advance of when we come out and start the work. So, I would say from a preparedness standpoint and from a getting ahead of kinda questions, just talking before the meeting, we're gonna meet to go over a standard that's coming up next year. So I think it's just the forward-looking in terms of the accounting practices and preparing for the audit, which, obviously, you can't, if you're not prepared for your monthly work that you're doing to prepare for the audit, you're not gonna be ready for the audit, so it's just kinda, it's just kind of a good practices in place.
I guess to the mayor's point, that's kinda where I was headed. Do you do any peer analysis between us, or is that like outside your scope as it is for an audit? I mean, is that some other, do we pay you an extra fee for consulting on that, or how does that work? Obviously, you have the eyes to see other villages. We don't.
Sure, sure. I mean, from a, from a financial, like a fund balance to expenditure ratio, I guess it really kinda depends. It depends on where you're at and what you're doing with your funds. If you're more saving up fund balance to spend on capital projects, or if you're going out to debt to borrow for capital projects, I mean, it really kind of depends. We don't do those kinds of peer ratios to see how you compare that way financially. But we do look at internal controls when we come in, and it's not necessarily peer-to-peer. While we see, you know, what you might do to another municipal audit that we do, really, your, the standards have us kinda look at what are the perfect controls that should be in place for any sized organization, and does the village have things in place that help mitigate all of the different risks that could be in place for not just the village audit, but for really for any, for any audit. So it's a really kind of a standardized look at what are the potential internal control failures that could be in place at an organization, and then, of course, we look at it from municipal operations, and what do you, what transactions are unique, not just at the village, but for municipalities overall. So it's really not set up peer-to-peer. We do see some trends, like I mentioned with the police pension funding, you're at the very higher end of that. We do see that. That's an easy one to kinda, kinda pick out that the village does well.
Awesome. Okay. All right. Well, Darshana, it sounds like you're doing an awesome job that we know you already do. So, Joe, thank you for the feedback, appreciate it, and Darshana, thank you, and you and your staff. Sounds like, you know, it was another excellent, you know, audit, and we appreciate it as a board as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. So, the last part of the mayor's report is the mayor's mention. We've got a few things going on this week, as well as this month, the rest of this month and the following month. To start off with, hosted by Astor Garden, tomorrow, September 24, is the Lamont Farmers Market, and it is your next chance to get a free t-shirt. So, meet Jason Berry at the market for the last Now and Then Lamont Downtown Bookwalk of the season. It will be at 4:30. Bring your book with you for the tour if you have one, and the Lamont Farmers Market is held on Tuesdays in the Village Green from 4:00 to 7:00 through October 15th. Again, that is on every Tuesday. Please visit the Facebook page, Lamont Farmers Market, or the website lamontfarmersmarket.com for more information. Lamontster Days has kicked off. With a whole list of Halloween events for all ages, the Lamont Area Historical Society presents two ghost tours. The Historically Haunted Bus Tour on September 28, departing Old Stone Church at 1:30 PM, and the Haunted History Pub Crawl on September 28 with check-in at Nexmech starting at 4:30 PM. Both events require a registration fee. And promise, bone-chilling fun and a glimpse into Lamont's ghostly past. Please reserve your spot at lamonthistory.org. The annual anticipated Fall on Canal Premier Market will be held on Sunday, September 29, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on and around Canal Street with over 50 hand-selected artisans, plus delicious food, photo ops, live music, drinks, and more. For more information and to prepay the $5 entry fee for ages 12 and up, please visit mabelsmarket.com. Next up, the entire month of October is Lamont Food Pantry's Treat or Treat, hosted by the Hope and Friendship Foundation. Bens are located inside the Lamont Police Department and pantry. To drop off, as well as drop off by the Jewel Customer Service Counter, bins are located inside, or by the Lamont counter, correct, visit lamontsterdays.com for a list of needed items. Also, throughout October is the annual Lamontster Annual Home Decorating Contest, sponsored by the Lamont Park District. Registration is free and is now open at lamontparkdistrict.org. Decorations must be up by October 23. The competition gets tougher every year, and be sure to take a ride around the town after the 23rd and check out the haunting decorations. A list of addresses will be available on the Lamont Park District Facebook page. Also, as part of Lamontster Days Fun, first off, the Fire District House will be held on Saturday, October 5, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Harvest Fest is happening at the Lamont Park District Centennial Park from 3:00 to 6:00 PM on October 5 as well. The Forge has their Monster Mash Carnival, which is October 11 through the 13th. The village of Lamont will host Lamontster Trick-or-Treating at participating businesses in the downtown on Saturday, October 26, from 12:00 to 2:00 PM. This event is in lieu of the Halloween Hoedown. Also, village trick-or-treat hours are on October 31st. So again, October 31st, trick-or-treat hours are from 3:00 to 6:30 PM. Please leave your porch light on if you are welcoming the trick-or-treaters, and please visit lamontsterdays.com for all the Lamontster Days events taking place with links to more information. So that is it for the mayor's report. Next up, Charlene, we have the clerk's report.
Thank you. The first item I have this evening is a resolution, and that would be R-72-24, and that's approving an award of contract for the 24, 2024 tree replacement project.
Okay, need a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion by trustee Shaughnessy, seconded by trustee Maher. Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note, the next four resolutions were budgeted for in this year's budget. So the first resolution is for our tree replacement program. One bid was received to plant parkway trees, specifically 55 trees. That one bid came from itrees.com, and we've been working with them for the last four years. I'm happy to say that we've replanted 275 new trees in the village over the last four years with this program. It makes a lot of people happy, and it's working well. So, staff recommendation is to award the contract to itrees.com for the total of, what was it, $29,835.
Okay, thanks, Ralph. Any questions or comments for Ralph?
I got one question.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Ray. Go ahead, you can go first.
There is a list of people who want trees?
Yes. Throughout the year, we compile the list of people that, you know, either want to, you know, replace a dead tree or a new tree in their parkway, and that list is usually fulfilled throughout the year with this program.
And what I wanted to ask is, based on the number we had to take down, how far into replacements?
So we took down between 1,800 and 1,900 with the Emerald Ash Borer, so we're, you know, we're doing well, but just keep-
10% replaced, but-
Keep in mind, that's-
A lot of people don't want them.
A lot of people don't want trees. They were very happy to see their parkway trees go. Unfortunately, it's not my belief, but they were happy, so whoever calls throughout the year usually gets fulfilled with a new tree. Yes.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Ralph. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kitridge absent. Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item is also a resolution. This would be R-73-24, and this is approving public works facility roof replacement.
Okay, need a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion by trustee McClafferty, seconded by trustee Snagowski. Ralph, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a roof replacement at the Public Works Building. For the last four or five years, we've had the roof repaired due to leaks in different areas, in the office area and mechanic bay area. Three quotes were received by local roofing companies, with the low quote coming in at $236,000. $236,500 from Adler Roofing. And we've worked with Adler before on some pump house roofing issues. So staff recommendation is to award Adler the contract for $236,500.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Ralph?
Can we go with the options for the warranty, the 20-year increasing it, or?
It's a 20-year warranty on the Public Works. I, I know your question is for the WELL 5.
Yes.
Yeah, we're paying for the 20-year, yeah, on the WELL 5 roof.
All right, roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kitridge Absinthe, Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item is also a resolution, and this is R-74-24, and this is approving award of contract at Cooper, Copper Ridge, I'm sorry, and Lamont Township Trail Connection Report Project.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, motion by trustee Stapleton, seconded by trustee Maher. Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution for the connection between Copper Ridge subdivision and the Lamont Township Trailways. Two bids were received for this project, with the low bid coming in from Miller Pipeline LLC at $99,682.50, which is $46,000 under the engineer's estimate. It's an eight-foot-wide screening path that will be gated on the Copper Ridge side. So the gate's not in this quote. We can handle that on our own. I can get it done cheaper than what they can give it to me for, so--
The gate on Fort Street, we could move.
Thank you, trustee Snagowski. Yeah, so staff recommendation is to award the contract to Miller Pipeline LLC for $99,682.50.
Okay, thanks, Ralph. Any questions or comments?
I just have a couple--
Go ahead, Dave.
Just quick ones. The, is this drivable?
It will be. It'll be an eight-foot-wide path if needed, if need be, yes.
And are they putting the stone in there?
Yes, we're putting down a CA6 base topped with the screenings.
Okay, it's not gonna be that, you know how you get that checkered stone sometimes that they'll put on a drivable path? It's not a stone, but it's like brick?
No, we're talking like what we have down by the quarries.
Okay, and then, could you, do you have a, do they, do they have a map of how it's going in, like where it's actually going?
I can get you one.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask.
Yeah.
Would you mind sending--
Yeah, I'll get you one.
There should be on the, on the set of plans, there should be a map.
Yeah, I'll get you one.
I didn't see it, but I, I mean, doesn't impact tonight, I just wanted to--
Yep. Gotcha.
Just for clarification, I think it's just for, it's drivable in an emergency situation. It's really meant for bikes and pedestrians to connect, but in, in an emergency, if needed, it could be, it could be drivable.
Yes.
But, and this came about during the development of Copper Ridge or the, you know, the planning of the development, is that it'll be connected. It'll be a nice amenity for the residents, and for anybody trying to connect to the north, they'll be able to take their, their bike or walk, at least partially off of Timberline Drive, which is a busy street, they can go through that connection instead of on Timberline. So it should be a ni, nice amenity for, for the community. And they should finish this year, Ralph?
Yeah, it's a late fall project.
Okay.
That's what Miller Pipeline's looking for, is to keep their guys working longer throughout the year, so they look for projects like this where they can keep their employees working.
Got it.
Thank you.
And to follow up, is this, is it wide enough for a fire truck, emergency vehicles?
Depending on, yeah, it's eight-foot wide, so it's--
Okay, got it. Got it, got it. All right.
Hopefully they don't bring the ladder truck down, that might be a different story.
Sink it? All right, all good? Okay, roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kitridge Absinthe, Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item is R-75-24, and this is approving WELL 5 facility, yeah, I'm tongue tied, facility roof replacement.
Okay, need a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion by trustee Shaughnessy, seconded by trustee McLafferty. Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the WELL 5 roof replacement. Three quotes were received with the low quote coming in from Adler Roofing, the same company that's gonna be doing the Public Works Building. There is a 20-year warranty on this roof here. The price came in at $128,590. It's a TPO membrane, which is a different membrane than the other one for the Public Works Building. It's a whole different story, but this recommendation came from the roofer, and it makes total sense to us where WELL 5 isn't air conditioning, air-conditioned during the summer, so it's the insulation properties of the, of the membrane, so this makes sense to us. So staff recommendation is to award Adler Roofing the contract for $128,590 for the roof replacement at WELL 5.
Thanks, Ralph. Any questions for Ralph on this?
Yeah, I, I guess I have one, not, not really relative to the roof, but to what you just said about the air conditioning. It doesn't make any sense to look at conditioning that. Is it because of the cold water coming in, condensation-type issue on the--
Yeah, it's, it's so damp up there, we would spend a fortune trying to air-condition that, and we don't need it up there.
Okay.
You know, in the wintertime, we keep the wellhouse probably at 50 degrees.
Okay.
It's not, it's not heated very high. Doesn't make sense to do that, because there's nobody there. So it doesn't make--
It's not worth it?
It's not, no.
Is it worth looking at the roof units of the Public Works Building?
The air conditioning units?
Yeah.
They're working fine. Yeah, they're, they're, you know, 18 years old as well. So when we do get recommendations from the HVAC company, you know, we do follow through with those, but we haven't heard anything bad about our units yet, or recently.
Thanks, Ralph. All right, roll call, please.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kitridge Absinthe, Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Motion approved. Thank you, Charlene. Okay, next up, Mike, anything for the attorney report?
I do not have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. George, administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick item while we're on building maintenance, the Village Hall minor renovation has begun, and really just more of a minor reconfiguration of offices, office units in the first floor. Really should be about a two-month project, and Village Hall remains open. There's gonna be, might have to go into 416 Main Street, the door, instead of 418 Main. There might be a, a minor inconvenience coming into Village Hall, so just reminder to folks that just about every service can be accessed, obtained online, so over the next two months and maybe even beyond, please try to access our services online. There'll be a vehicle sticker or a water bill, and even every one of our permits now can be obtained online through OpenGov. So next two months, it might be a little bit of a disturbance downstairs, but should be about a two-month project, but you can always call us, email, or, again, everything can be done online. So just, just wanted to pass that along, that that has begun. So minor renovation downstairs, and if you have any questions, please give us a call. Thank you.
Thanks, George. All right. Next up, any board reports? Staff reports? Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to mention since we were over the early October board meeting that Red Ribbon Week is October 23rd to the 31st. It started after the death of Drug Enforcement Administration Agent Kiki Camarena. This year's theme is "Life is a Movie, Film Drug-Free." Some interesting stats that were on the, on the website, it's now the leading cause, overdoses is the leading, leading cause of death in the United States for people between 18 and 45. That's a pretty big range. 110,000 overdose deaths in 2022, which is the last year they gathered stats. We do some programs during that week. We, we collect the pharmaceuticals in conjunction with DVA, but I just wanted to make full aware that that's coming up.
Thanks, chief.
Chief, does Narcan work against fentanyl, or no?
Mostly does. It, I mean, if it's a high level of fentanyl, and the problem with fentanyl, it's, it's not properly mixed, and so they could get a, you know, high-microgram dosage or a low-microgram. For low, it, it still does work. For some of the high-microgram, it's so fast that it doesn't--
All right. Ralph?
Yes, so our 2024 MFT resurfacing project has started on Logan Street and Hillview Drive, so the construction crews are out there doing concrete, and you'll see the, the pavers out there within the next couple of weeks. So stay away if you can, drive slow, give them a break. They'll be out there for a few more weeks and wrapping it up hopefully by the end of October.
Thanks, Ralph. Thanks, chief. All right. Okay, thanks. Okay.
I'll take one.
Anyone else want a bound copy?
Okay, thanks, Darshana. All right. Next up, any unfinished or new business?
Sorry?
No? Okay. All right, George, audience participation.
Well, it's that time of the evening. If anybody has any public comment, you can come up to the podium, and, Mr. Mayor, I don't see anybody in the crowd and no comments prior, so moving on to the next part of the agenda.
Okay, all right. So I need some help here on executive--
Just 2C1 and 2C2.
2C1, okay. So next up is our executive session. I will be asking for a motion to move into executive session to discuss under Chapter 5 ILCS of the Open Meetings Act, 2C1 Appointments, Employment Compensation, Disciplined Performance or Dismissal of Specific Employees, and 2C2, Collective Negotiating Matters Between the Public Body and Its Employees or Their Representatives or Deliberations Concerning Salary Schedules for One or More Classes of Employees. I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee McLafferty, seconded by trustee Stapleton to go into executive session. All in favors, oh, roll call, please, I'm sorry.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kitridge Absinthe, Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Okay, motion approved. Again, want to thank everyone for--
There'll be no, no formal action.
Yeah, no formal action. You're talking about after, yeah.
Yep.
No formal action. Again, want to thank everyone for coming out on this special day with the swearing-in of our new police officer. We will take a brief break. Again, we will have no formal action, so this ends our public section of this week's meeting. Again, want to thank everyone and wish everyone a great week, and we will re-adjourn for executive session shortly.